I want to call the meeting to order and want to welcome everybody here tonight. We'll start with the prayer and then the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we come to you just to thank you for this beautiful day you've given us. We're thankful for the guests that we have here. Special prayer for Pastor Ayers who's under the weather and couldn't make it here tonight. And Lord, we live in a great country, a lot of opportunities, and we're just thankful for our leadership. We're thankful for the leadership in this room. We just pray that everybody makes the right decision for the citizens of our town. And all this I pray. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Beverly?
Here.
Klepper?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Okay, had before you the council minutes of July 18th for your approval. Any additions or corrections?
Make motion to approve Ezra.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Had before you a short list of the bill since it's August the 1st, so there's not that many. So, any questions on the list?
I have a question for the gentleman at Chevrolet, replaced Oncourt tire sensor. Was that the only thing they did for that amount of money?
Yeah, they replaced two tire pressure sensors. And then, and then they had to, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure on the bill also it was to rebalance those two tires. We had the other two done last year.
Gotcha.
Corey, on M&amp;M?
Yes.
I must have, I must have not seen a lot of the patching they did. Was there quite a bit for that amount of money? Yeah, I'd just seen three, four, or five spots. A lot more than that, though.
Yeah, there was probably 11 or 12.
Yeah. Yeah. If anybody has anything, we'll pay the bills.
Okay. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is Erica. Erica Willetser, sorry, from the Defiance County CIC.
And I would make a motion to go in executive session for land acquisition.
Economic development applicant.
Yeah. Yes, I second that.
Okay, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yep.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda, boards and commissions. Don't think we had any. Council committee reports. See, we had one. Finance committee from 7:27.
Yep, we met last Wednesday mainly to discuss the plan for a pool. Our pool's not getting in any better shape, and Finance Committee was asked to meet and see what we're going to do with it. There's a couple of ideas of replacing liner or replacing the pool. Right now, the Hicksville Community Fund, Hicksville Foundation, I know Mr. Betters is on that, on that, Hicksville Foundation also. They're really focused on putting a splash pad in the park, and we've kind of went back and forth on locations. They kind of have an idea where they want to put it. At the same time, we can't get our pool patched anymore. No one will work on it. It was built in 1965. It's original liner. So, after a lot of talk, you know, a new splash pad, a new bath house, a new pool would all be the cheapest way if you did all at one time. The foundation's really focused on the splash pad itself, wanted to know what the village thought about the pool, what our plans were. After we talked about it quite a while, all three of the committee members were not in favor of replacing liner on the pool, thought it was kind of a waste of money, and that we're going to find a lot more issues behind that liner when it comes to the concrete and the structural issues that are behind there. We also talked with our fiscal officer to figure out how much money the village had to put towards a pool and what we could afford. And also, the idea of a levy was brought up, and with possibly the village getting a 20-year loan out with a bank or something similar to that. Cheryl's kind of getting some figures of what the monthly fees would be for the village to incur through a bank and what like a two-mill levy could generate, to see what we could afford for a pool. This way, we could have a pool, a splash pad, and a new pool house all at the same time. So, later at the end, we want to kind of go in executive session and bring all the council up to speed on everything. But, so we talked about that. Even possibly at the end of the season, I think August 6th might be the last day for the Hicksville, the existing Hicksville pool. Good chance that may no longer be there. If that's the case, I know Corey's talked about maybe even demoing the pool, the bath house area, removing the trees, he already got a quote for that, and possibly relocating the two volleyball courts and possibly even relocating the skate parks. So, we have a nice big area for a pool, splash pad, and bath house. So, I need to talk a little bit more about the financials, talk about a levy, and see if the residents want a new pool or not. And then, after we talked about that, the next topic that was brought up by Mr. Wong was to discuss village wages of employees and possibly having these hourly rates to be adjusted, adjustable by the village administrator. Not saying you're paying by merit, but kind of have a little range on if you're at $16 or $19 an hour. We went into a little bit of discussion on it and said we'd have to think about it and get back and meet again to discuss it a little bit further.
Okay. Any questions for Eric, committee?
Sounds like a good meeting.
It was very productive.
Yes.
Any other committee reports? Administrator's report.
Corey, not much more from what I sent you guys. Up to the well, to the well field, the stone drives have all been completed. Hopefully, later this week, Orpman will be out to drill the two test wells. Brian Excavating is scheduled to bore under the railroad tracks on September 12th. That's what CSX has scheduled. We do have our bid reopening tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. here in City Hall for the water tower. New signage has been hung at the recycle lot for the new schedule, so open on Tuesdays instead of Mondays. The energy optimizers are still in town working. They are way behind schedule. They're finishing up there at the sewer plant. Hopefully, a couple more weeks and they'll be, they'll be completed. And then, the remodel for the pavilion kitchen is finally scheduled for September, September 13th through October 6th. So, at that time, we won't be taking any rentals for the pavilion. And to touch base real quick with Taylor, we had discussed the MediaCom antenna for that tower.
Yeah.
I finally did hear back from him at the end of last week, and that antenna, they have relocated one, so that one on the tower is no longer in service. So, we don't, we have nothing to worry about when it comes to the MediaCom situation. Other than that, that's all I got.
Kitchen remodel, what is that involved, what are you going to have done?
It's gonna, we'll have all-new LED lighting put in there. We're having some new, some additional electrical circuits put in there, because right now, people run a roaster too, it keeps tripping breakers. So, we'll have some additional circuits for that, all-new paint, and then tearing all the cabinetry out. It'll be more like an open shelving concept, and then we'll have Batter Shell Cabinetry's putting in granite countertops as well.
Is the leak that was existed down there, has it been repaired?
Yes.
Kent's thinking you said no.
The, which, like the ceiling leak or the leaks in the restrooms?
The leak from, from the wall, that's under the ground.
Oh, it was under that dirt hill. Now, we're still getting infiltration from that.
Shouldn't we fix that before we put new stuff in?
That doesn't affect the kitchen.
Oh, okay, okay, as long as it doesn't affect.
The restrooms, yes, that is a huge ordeal there, that we need to figure out how we're going to do it and what we want to do.
Why don't we just expose it?
Yeah, we got a price, a little, it's been a few years back, we got a price on it.
A couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Is what I found.
A few years ago, before COVID, it was, it was at least a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Couldn't we just expose it? Expose all the concrete and, and?
We'd have to insulate it somehow. We have to do something with it, because I think that's what that dirt was for, was for the insulation barrier.
Well, you can, you could insulate with insulation and cap the whole thing with concrete again if you wanted to.
The, the one thing is, is all that power comes underground up that hill, so all that's gonna, would have to be overhead, or we have to figure out from AEP how we would handle that.
Or deeper.
I would like to expose the walls, and that way, we could expand the parking lot and everything else, but.
And you gotta buy coke.
Yeah. We'll have it done in no time.
Okay, any other questions for the administrator?
Did the people get pushed back? I thought they were going to start at the end of July.
They did start.
Oh, they did?
And then they stopped.
Okay.
Yeah, so, I know they were having an issue getting, yeah, I knew they were, they were having a issue getting a mill head to town.
Okay.
Kirkham was having a hard time getting one to town, because they're all out on other jobs. They haven't until October 31st. Is there a completion date?
Is the, just touching base on the kitchen remodel, is that something that village employees are going to be doing? Who's going to be doing the demo and painting and all that stuff?
We will, we, the village employees will tear that out. Ron Bauer will be doing all the painting, and then John Batter Shell will be doing the countertop and the cabinetry in there.
Darren doing the electrical or circuits?
Yep, yep.
I guess, is that something we did budget for this year?
Yes, we had budgeted $20,000 for it.
Okay. Any other questions for the administrator?
Corey, how many, have you got any bids? Did any bids come in on the water tower?
There's a couple that come in.
Two of them?
As of this morning, late morning, yeah, there was two.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Probably save two for last.
Solicitor's report.
First thing I have is Resolution 2022-07, first reading, oh no, third reading by caption only, "A resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to sell Lot 55 of Edgerton's First Edition to the Village of Hicksville."
Entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion before we vote? Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
And then, the other thing is Resolution 2022-09, which is a first reading by caption only, "A resolution authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency." This obviously is grant-based.
Second, roll call.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Second, third readings, "A resolution 2022-09 by caption only, "A resolution authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency."
So, move.
Second.
Any other discussion before we vote?
Just to clarify, this is just to apply for a grant?
Right.
Correct, allow us to apply for a grant?
Which I think Kent's working on, actually.
Okay, roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
Martin?
Other than the stuff we talked about to do with the spec building, that's what I've been, the last couple of weeks been working on, so that's all I have for tonight.
I have one question for you, Ron, on this lot. Are we going to have a separate auction for that? Are we going to wait and?
What's the wishes? Wait for?
Till we decide what we're going to do with the rest?
The other, that we're talking about, the bar? Right now.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's whatever council wishes. That one, we have to have an auction.
Well, anything we should do, we have to have an auction. Well.
Must just somehow tie it to economic development.
Probably ought to have some more information on something else.
Probably ought to go into executive session for that.
Okay.
That one might be appropriate.
And, and take yours in along with it.
Maybe.
Maybe. After we, after we check with their attorney.
We can do it at the end, right?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions for a solicitor? Okay, police chief?
Mark is absent. He's not going to be here tonight, but he left his reports.
Yes, yeah.
Do we know, did you get any applicants for an acquisition?
I think so.
Oh, good.
I talked, Mayor's Court, I talked to the officer, and I think they have a couple. Not sure about the lieutenant, though, but.
Yeah, one of them was from out of town, that's all I know.
Yeah, so, yes, to answer your question.
That's what was written. It was written.
Fire chief, EMS.
There's two of us going through firefighter two class. We've got three more classes and we're done. We made it through all the physical stuff, so I survived. We have an applicant I'd like the mayor to recommend to put on the department. It's Derek Crockeran. He's already certified to firefighter two, and has spent time with the volunteer side of coming in fires, so he'll be a good asset to the department.
Any questions for, make a recommendation?
He's a great addition.
Okay, I'll recommend Derek Crockeran, R-A-N, R-O-A-N. Recommend that we hire him as the next firefighter.
Is he a local boy?
What?
Local?
Yeah, lives just down the road from me, Haver Drive.
He wasn't local, he's married.
Married local.
Married local. How much marriage recommendation?
Plans on stands.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mark?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Klepper?
Yes.
And we finally got a chassis for our tanker. We made it to South Dakota. Looks like it's going to be a fall delivery. EMS side, we have a meeting tonight for EMR classes, if anybody's interested, so. Moving on.
Any questions for the fire chief?
Thank you.
Thanks. Park director, Val.
All I have, was everybody, I know, is going, my last day of the pool will be Friday at 6:00.
You having a party? No?
There happens swimming lesson going on.
You want to explain why?
Park's Saturday.
The main reason is lack of lifeguards. They're all, not all, but most of them are in sports, and they can only work certain days, and they, so mom have to work at the same time. I've been fighting this for three weeks, so I just figured it's best to lose.
What's the last day, is it Friday or Saturday?
Friday. Saturday, we're cleaning up. Put the stuff away.
So, the fifth is the last day for the public?
Pardon?
So, the fifth is the last day for the public?
Mm-hmm.
Right. How was, how was attendance this year?
It's really been good. I mean, we've had that big fun day, Monday thing, and we have like 80 kids that come to that. There's been different groups, but we've been doing really good with attendance.
Do you have any idea what like the daily count, I mean, average, average daily?
I can prove, I can show it, but I don't really, like, some days we'll have 80, some days we'll have, today, we weren't very busy.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, any other questions?
I normally will stay open until the week before fair, but we just don't have enough lifeguards.
How many lifeguards were there this year?
Eight.
And what's average? What do you guess?
Around eight to 10, but, I mean, we've had a few that got another jobs and can only work, one of them has jobs, and then they try to work their time with the pool, too.
And every year, it gets a little tougher to get, fight the lifeguards.
Right.
I mean, you, you work harder to get them in and branch out for.
I was close to being recertified and not.
So, if we build, so if we build a new pool, so if we build a new pool, we're going to have lifeguards to?
I know.
Run it.
Right, yeah.
How many do you have to have? Two?
Well, three every day.
Does it depend on how big the pool is, or does it?
Pardon?
Does it depend on how big the pool is?
I have no idea.
How many you have to have?
I would think so.
You have to have somebody inside.
Right.
At least one.
But that does, the inside person is not a lifeguard?
No.
So, you rotate those three, or just the one inside doesn't have to be a lifeguard?
They rotate, yeah. And then, like, when we're sure, I'll, I'll fill in.
Count that out.
Well, if you could get the, if you would have the ability to pull average numbers this summer, that would, that would be helpful, especially as we kind of enter into this pool discussion, so.
Cheryl, does the city still pay for the kids to get certified?
Yeah.
Okay.
After they put their time in.
So, at the end of the summer?
Right.
They're reimbursed?
If they come back, too, you know, because a lot of them will stay one year.
It's a two-year, so they get half the first year?
Okay.
And half the second year.
Okay, and it seems like that's pretty standard in the area, that that's what they're doing, is offering it once they put in their time. Okay.
How much is that certification? You know how much it is off the top of your head?
It's like $75.
Oh, okay.
It used to be more, but this last summer, they.
It's over a few hundred.
The Brian pool, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was, I was.
You can do it in a bunch of places.
You still got your certification, Tony?
No, but hey, tell me, I'll, I'll be there.
They're $100 lifeguards?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just got to talk my husband into letting me do it. He says I have too many jobs.
Just get him certified and bring him, too.
There we go. That's right.
Any other questions?
He can run the front.
Yeah, there we go.
Questions for?
Kids.
He's eight.
Thank you, Val.
Thanks, Val.
Yes.
Cheryl, fiscal officer's report.
One's really short, because the day was the day everybody closed out their business, and I won't have it till next time. But I do have a letter from MediaCom in there that are raising some more rates.
Any questions for Cheryl?
Have the phones been updated?
Haven't heard from Rick.
I have. I noticed this one was missing.
Yeah, it's in the cupboard.
Charlie got man.
Okay, any other questions for the fiscal officer? Okay, mayor's report, concert series this Thursday again. Sarah Broch, B-R-O-S-C-H, if I pronounce that right. At the Huber, seven to nine, bring your lawn chair, Rotary will have food, free will donation. And the last concert will be the 18th, praise team from Cornerstone Church will be the last one. And I want to recognize the sponsors, which are the Hicksville Bank, SMTA, King Insurance, and Klepper Construction. So, hats off to people that finance these bands. So, every week, we get more and more people, so check it out. Any questions for me?
I have one. It's an email about concern complaint from, I guess, a concern from a resident here in town about a water issue on South Bryan Street from our property, and I didn't know where it was setting at, or I was supposed to address it.
I went down, looked at it, that's the first I knew about it. Corey, I guess?
I know it got brought up a lot back in 2020, before and during the build, when they're breaking ground on it, and had a lot of concerns on water setting onto his property. And I remember going down there and looking at it, and now he says that he's really having a lot of issues with all his trees dying and everything else from all the way. So, I didn't know where it was at, and I told him I'd bring it up Monday night, so.
Yeah, I've never spoke with a certain citizen, but one employee that is a neighbor, I was informed about that like day one, when I first got on council. I had seen it, and, I mean, I've seen the water down there. You know, I've seen it in his garage, and I've seen it in the neighbor's yard, but.
Been like that for years.
What is it, drainage issue, or?
Somebody built a new house up there, and the house is up quite, looks, looks higher. I mean, I don't want to transit or anything other, she, it looks quite a bit higher. Concern is the shit.
Couple feet, you think?
Oh, two, two and a half feet, probably.
The house is sitting at an elevation that it should be. The house is sitting there correct. But when you put your, when you put, when you build a garage that's three feet lower than the center of the road in front of you, you just, you buried yourself.
Right.
And like I say, it has flooded ever since it was built. I'm not saying that that house didn't put a little more water on him, but it, and it's a super easy fix if we would let him, the village would let him do it. Let's just run tile across there from his backyard over to the, to the creek.
Well, this definitely isn't the first time this has been brought up, obviously, with this property alone, but multiple scenarios it might be worth considering as part of our building permit application and existing condition survey or something along those lines versus what's proposed to kind of amend our permitting process. I mean, that's really the only way, other than, you know, one person going out and eyeballing it. The village doesn't have a transit at its disposal, and as far as documenting the topography that was there previously, it's not really a great way to do that. Short of having a topo survey done before and after.
Well, the general part of it, though, is if the person building the house has the right to use their lot to the best of their, and if, you know, that causes addition, that's not automatically a problem if it causes a legal problem, if it causes additional water to be thrown down on the neighbors, depending on the natural flow of the water and the location there. So, I mean, it's not like, for instance, just, and I don't know a thing about that particular there, so, I mean, it's not like, for instance, just, I don't know a thing about that particular property, it's not necessarily like we, we could have denied somebody a building permit because the neighbour's houses, or garage is built down too low, or something like that. I think then you run yourself a being at risk for legal action by a property owner who wants to legally use their land.
I've been a part of other projects where you're not allowed to increase the, or redirect the flow.
Redirect? But that would be the natural flow, once he builds, as long as it's the natural flow. I mean, the problem is, like, where you redirect, you got, you know, a perfect example, like out in the country, a field drains out into somebody's, and they dam it up somehow and run it somewhere else and flood somebody else's property, that's a problem from a civil perspective, your neighbour could sue you, but the natural flow of the water, just because you increased by building a structure there or something, the natural flow of the water off of that structure and the concrete and everything like that, I'm not sure the law would afford that, any legal responsibility on the person that built the home there, as long as it was built correctly, and if what Ron says is true, they built it to where it should be and all that stuff, no.
And, and, you know, I, I wouldn't wanna see us put anything into, and I think a hundred years ago, when we, we came up with, in fact, I think I did it, some rules and regs on, on new construction and dirt moving and things like that, and I don't know if we put an elevation that, seems like there was something in there that, that you had to check the elevations, you had to know what they were, you couldn't build a new house in a hole, because as soon as somebody puts the house in a hole, because they didn't wanna spend all that money for fill, then the first time it floods, it's not their problem anymore, it's the village.
He's right into that, too.
Yeah, yeah, and, and so it might be in there, but, you know, the law says that you can't divert the water, nor can you hold water back against somebody, you know, he, gentleman, you're, you're speaking of with the, with the low garage, he can't put a dam up in there, back there, and hold all that water back, that's against the law, too. So the only thing that you can do is to appease this problem that, that's, that's down there, is just let him put a drain across that twenty or thirty feet of village property across there. There's already one running across it that Yoder Myers and Milner put in there, at their expense, he could, I don't know, he could go tap onto that, or run his own over there, and then it would go away. It's a simple fix.
Cory, this is, I'm assuming, one of our ordinances. The last line of the ordinance is, "In no instance shall buildings or lot forming block natural waterways, or shall grading or elevation of lots cause a water problem on neighbouring lots."
And, and we only have one neighbour that's having a problem, correct?
I, yeah. I don't know what it was like before. That's my opinion. That's where, there's, there's no real way now, at this point, to document what the existing condition was.
Well, and I'm sure that, that the new house added a bit more water...
It's bound to.
Because it's a lot more road structure.
Yeah, hard surface.
You've got more hard surface, but you're also draining, everything in the front goes to the road, because he's probably a foot higher than the road, which is, makes for a perfect setup for a house. I wouldn't want, want anything less than a, than a foot, if I was building it. So I don't know, like I say, that it's an easy fix, it can be done, or, or we can just keep talking about it like we've done for the last probably ten, fifteen years, but now he's got a, he thinks he has a reason why it's flooded, he's, he can blame somebody now.
Now, Troy, would this typically be a civil matter, where it's not necessarily our...
True.
Because we don't have that requirement...
Right.
As far as the topography survey that we said...
Like in our building permit process, or whatever.
Approve something, a grading plan, for instance, it becomes a civil matter, not a... Yeah, if we approved something we were wrong, then that would throw something back on the village. If we didn't have anything in that process, then what you're talking about is a neighbour dispute, a civil dispute between neighbours about throwing water on their property, and I know, like a lot of things in town that happen to be civil, they always look to the village or look, you know, for help or whatever, that, that's not anything new to Hicksville, it's everywhere.
Well, and that's, I guess it gives guidance to...
Right.
Direct these people where they need to. If it's a civil matter, it needs to be handled.
And over the years, at least as I've been the solicitor, we've had several, several cases like that, and that was ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that was my response, and if you, you know, go see your attorney, if you think you got a claim because they did something and threw water down on you.
Well, we've had so much of that with, there's one home builder in particular that has built a lot of nice places around this town, and as soon as he built something, then a neighbour somewhere, it might be a block down the street, but it go, hey, I never had water in my basement till this guy built that house. Come on, you know, but it happens all the time, and, and that's kinda what's going on now.
Sounds like as those complaints come in in the future, you just need to direct them to their, their own personal legal advisor. I said I'd bring it up, and I did.
Yeah.
You'd have mattered.
Good discussion, though, needs to be brought up.
Well, and, and I, I'm a firm believer in, in that we, as a village, the administrator, the, that somebody should know how to use a laser or, or a transit and set an elevation on these houses, so you're not setting them in a hole. I mean, that should be part of the building permit, you know, hey, I need a permit, I'm gonna build a house, okay? Where's, where's the finished floor gonna set? And if the guy says, well, you know, it'll be ten inches lower than this road, no, no, you're not building it here. Well, we need some kind of, something with teeth in it, so that we can stop somebody from doing that. Can that happen?
Depends on the permitting process, I mean, right now, the problem is, we don't have like building inspection or anybody like that, I mean, like if, say, in like a place like Defiance, you go to build a house, each time you finish whatever part, the building inspector goes out...
Yep.
Yep, that looks good, if it doesn't, no, you know, that's too high, that's too low, you need to, before you can move on to the next part or whatever, and he comes right up there.
But all that is in black and white.
That's all in their ordinances, and in their, yeah, they got it a lot more specific.
The slab's out, it's too late. It isn't too...
Well, it's never too late. It's too late, it's too late for a cheap fix. The cheaper fix.
You got property for sale with a slab on it.
Nice thing about fresh concrete, it comes out easy. But, and, and one of the, one of the fellow council members has, has talked about that we should possibly have, I, I get, I don't wanna scare everybody when I say the word engineer, but we should have somebody with some knowledge that can, that could do these kinda things, and could draw us up, so you, in, in my opinion, when I heard that, and, and we talked about this years ago, was to get some kid fresh out of college, bring him here, and make him, you know, this would be his, his starting point, and so that we have a, a engineer that can look up codes and different things, and, and go out and, and put an instrument on, on a particular piece, and say, hey, you know, this is...
Wouldn't you think the builder have some responsibility? You know, they have the transit...
Well...
They do civilly, not with the village, though.
Yeah, but, but, just like the case that we're talking about, we've got, we've got a building that's, that used to set up here at the bank, and, and now it's sat down there for forty years. A guy builds a new home, which, which down there, you need new homes to kinda dress the area up, so what do you do, you know? But if we had something in black and white, and somebody that could go down and say, hey, listen, you know, this thing is, is sitting eleven and a half inches above the center of this road, which we have written into our contract, and that garage floor is three and a half feet below the center of the road, what were you expecting, you know?
But most of them are too high, right, new homes?
No, they've been, they've been, put some in that have been too low, too.
Oh, yeah.
Not very few.
So...
Why are we responsible?
It costs more money to put them too high.
And we gotta bring a lot more stuff.
Well, it's, it's just that if we have, if, if, you know, everybody comes to the village, you know, if they, if there's a problem...
If they're aggrieved.
They're, they're seeing one of us, or they're seeing Cory, or they're seeing somebody, you. So if, if we're gonna have a zoning guy, we don't have a zoning guy, but if we did, you know, they oughta know a multitude of things, so that they could do it all. Agree?
It was me, I was the other council person that discussed this.
Oh, yeah.
I'm all for improving our permitting process. There's a lot of unsafe conditions we have in this community as a result of no inspection process and everybody trying to do their own work. I'm all for it, obviously fiscally might not make sense.
Do you think it would be a full-time or a part-time position?
Part-time position, especially currently, but there are, I mean, there's been a lot of remodel projects that have happened lately, the CRA's increased, obviously, new construction, that are part of areas where the county has a permitting system. I think that's something Defiance County could benefit from, but it's something I think that is worth discussing.
Would a position like that generate its own benefit?
It would be tough in Hicksville, because we're not generating enough permits.
Theoretically, yes, that's a good permit, and, and a municipality that has a permitting process typically, that permit drop, the permit fees are what fund that position.
Yeah.
So if we had more new construction, absolutely.
If we were, if we were twenty thousand people population as opposed to thirty-five hundred, and, and what, I guess, we're gonna be answering your question, what do we do, maybe a half dozen, or a dozen? A dozen, I'm really, really busy here.
Well, I think in the last four or five years, we've doubled production since like twenty years, so...
Oh, yeah.
When I moved here in sixteen, I think there have been two new houses built in the last ten years, so, or something like that. So since sixteen, I think we've had twelve or fourteen now.
And I'm, I'm, I'm just gonna say this, I talked to the homeowners down there, and, and, you know, they kinda come to the city to help protect them with the runoffs and different things, and in this situation, they had talked to the builder during the build, and says, hey, I get, we already get water problem in this direction, you know, make sure we don't, don't add more to it, or if you do, you know, kinda keep an eye on it, kinda thing.
Well, what's he gonna do with the water? It ran down there anyhow.
Right, but that doesn't, does that constitute adding more to it, though? I mean, that makes sense.
I wouldn't swear to the fact that he's getting more, because like I say, everything that's out front, from the face of that house forward, it all comes...
And with the gutter system, doesn't it tie into the stormwater drain?
If you have storm, a storm sewer in front, our ordinances don't allow it to tie into a combined system.
That one's got storms.
Oh, yeah.
But...
Big storm.
At the end of the day, it's a civil dispute. It's not, it's not the village, I'm not saying this discussion...
It's not we turn a blind eye to it, but there's certain things that happen in the village that we don't have control over, we don't, there's not a remedy that the village can provide.
If we had a permitting process that required a existing conditions report document, as well as post-grading, then absolutely it's, it's our responsibility...
To make sure that those rules are followed.
However, in this scenario, once again, I don't think this is an unproductive conversation, but I don't wanna sit here and wait another twenty minutes discussing something that's really something that should be, should be a civil, should, civil dispute.
Okay.
So with that, we'll move along.
Yep. Okay, where we, uh...
I'm just married for work.
I already did that.
Oh, you brought it up, okay.
Anything else needs to be brought before the council, besides you wanna...
I don't think anyone else around here, anything to say. Put it to sleep.
Erica's still out there.
Yeah.
Did she have anything? That would actually be a great conver, uh, question for Eric. Do you know, has the county ever entertained a countywide permitting?
No, but I love the idea, and I was gonna go talk to him tomorrow about it.
Okay.
The only thing I'll, the only thing I'll say, this goes back to Mayor Heaver, he pushed for that, to get the county to do something for us, sure would, nay, and cost was exorbitant, and...
Like a countywide building inspector or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think Diane even approached him at some point, too, it was just financially, not, maybe things have changed since Mayor Heaver.
Well, there's a lot more money available now from different grant resources.
Yeah.
I mean, it's worth, it's worth their ask.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there, there again, that's where I thought a kid fresh out of college, a local kid, could come here to, to work, and, and we could create, some stuff we don't have to create, but, you know, give him, make him a job, and, and let him sit down and, and draw the things up that, that we as a council think need drawn up, let him do all the bookwork to research it, and make sure that it can be done, and go through our, Troy, and make sure that it's legally to be done, and we're talking about this again, and they're done.
So you wanted to go, you wanted to go into the session for something, correct?
Yes, for economic development and land, purchase or sale. How's that?
That's okay, and I'll judge it once we're in there. We can talk about something that may be brought up, if not...
Erica, please?
Is this regarding...
Yes, Erica, please stand.
Yeah, here we go.
That was the economic development.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Yeah.
I second it.